Good evening and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of July 13th, 2017. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
My pledge remains to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Keith, would you take role, please?
Sure.
Larry Fox?
Here.
Jeff Newsom?
Ebsen.
Joe Colaini? Sue Grissom?
Yeah.
Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Tom Murphy.
Alrighty. Thank you very much. Next up, item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Grissom, second from Commissioner Mitchell. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Next up, item five, approval of our January 22nd, 2017, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Motion from Commissioner Voit, second from Commissioner Mitchell. Are there any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carries. We have a call to the public. Anybody this evening would like to address the planning commission? We have one now and we'll have one also at the, towards the end of the meeting. Anyone? Your choice.
Just a short story on the item C.
Okay.
Heartland Estates. I just want to make sure that it goes through. That's the short story.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Lang is already received an email from John Presley, President of the Association. I'm the Vice President. Just want, if you've got any questions, let me know.
Alright, if we could get your-
I can help you.
Alright, if we could get your name for the record. What is your name?
Charlie Myers, M-Y-E-R-S.
Okay. You good with that, Troy?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Let the record show that Commissioner Colaini has arrived. At about 7:03. You're good. Next up will be, we'll close call to the public. We'll move to item 7A. This is site plan application number 17-011 for Heartland Plaza LLC. The request is to construct the Dairy Queen building and renovate the facade of an existing buildings within the shopping center. So what we'd like to do tonight is we'll probably allow our planning director to introduce the project and allow our applicant to introduce himself and anything he would like to add. And then we'll go through the planning staff letter that we all have in our packets this evening. So with that, we'll turn it over to Troy.
Let me just start off by trying to explain generally where this is located. I don't know if that helps. This is a aerial image of the intersection of 23 going north and south here and then M-59 here. So the property is-
Now, turn the others off.
Is in this general area here. I'm kind of circling it. I'm going to zoom in. So this being M-59 going here, this being the former Walmart facility, which is now Rural King, at least for the majority of that building. The applicant has two projects that are associated with this request. The first one is what I'll call the Dairy Queen Building, which is up on M-59 and is in this location. The applicant is proposing to raise that building, take it all the way down, and then construct a new building in this area. The second request is to renovate and remodel an existing building back in this location here. So those are the two requests associated with this project. I'll show a brief site plan of the project. This is a site plan that would depict the Dairy Queen Building, if you will, M-59 up here. This is the proposed building here. It's about, what is that, 13,000 square feet? 11,200 square feet building. The Dairy Queen would remain a tenant in this building. There would be one drive-through window here to service the Dairy Queen Restaurant Ice Cream Shop facility here. And then they've identified another potential tenant here, then the remainder of the building would be left for future tenants. So that's the proposal A, or project A, if you will. The other project is, I wonder if I can get a site plan. I'll use this one here, is to renovate the existing, what was the Dollar, or next to the Dollar Tree. It used to be a Food Town building. It had come in previously before for Tractor Supply. That project has fallen through, but the applicant desires to renovate that building and get it ready for a future tenant. The staff report also lists a request to construct or do these future buildings here. That's not quite right. What really the applicant is attempting to do is to show that the, this would be a common wall. Although there wouldn't be any tenants there now, the applicant's attempting to show that in the future, this is going to be a common wall. And therefore, they don't want to be held to a standard of installing brick, like the front fascia of this building. And so they're just depicting on their plans, future buildings to be shown. So any reference in the staff report identifying this as part of the project is not quite correct. It's just intended to be shown that on the original plan that was approved for this development, there was buildings shown there. When Tractor Supply came in, this was somewhat of a garden area, outdoor garden area. What the applicant's now trying to show is he's going back to more of what the original plan was, and there would be buildings here at some point in the future. And when they get to that point, they'll, they'll come back in front of the planning commission. So that, in a sense, is the project. There's two parts of that project, and I'll just leave it open for any questions or comments.
Alright. Well, if you'd like to introduce yourself and anything you'd like to add at this time?
Good evening and thank you for having me. My name is Frank Jarboe from Symmetry Management and Development. We manage and develop the site for the current group that owns it. I do want to start out by saying the art band that's up there right now, that's just speculative. There's no deal that's been signed. We hope to get them, but there's nothing that's concrete. So that should have been left off, actually, I left off the plan. Dairy Queen is staying. I want to make sure everybody knows that. I know that's a town favorite, so.
It is.
You might miss them for a few months, but we're going to take them away during the cold season, so make sure they get back during the warm season. We're just looking to get site plan approval and get working right away because we are in a crucial time with the Dairy Queen. Making sure he gets shut down during, he's been nice enough to agree to this, to go away for eight months while we do construction and then come back. So I'd happy to answer any questions. I know that there was some misunderstanding about the site plan, about the building that was in the back. That should have been labeled "future" for the buildings that were next door. We're not here to get any type of approval for any of that. All we want to do with the back building there is go and match the facade that's to the rest of the shopping center and bring it up to something that's presentable that maybe we could lease out. Obviously, we know what happened with the Tractor Supply deal. That went away. But we, you know, it's, obviously, it's more, it's more, it looks more appealing when there's not a big black fence in front of it and it looks the way it does. So we just wanted to put some money in it. We don't have any tenants for it yet, but we feel that it's, it's a better fit if we just put some money in it now and hopefully we get something. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Well, what we'd like to do is take a look, you probably have a copy of, from the staff memo dated July 6th. And if we run through there, we'll hit all the points that we need to talk about when we go through a site plan review. The first few pages. Got it?
Yeah, I was going to ask a question first.
Okay.
Just to make sure I understand what Troy was saying. On page two of your review letter, the second paragraph, talking about the exterior renovations include the, to reface the front of the building and the west side of the building. Now you're saying, no, not the, not the west side of the building. Is that correct?
No.
I thought that's what he said. You're, I-
We're going to get there.
Yeah.
But no.
Okay. No.
No. He's, they're, they're proposing, we're going to get there in the architecture. What he's saying, if you're familiar with the Target store?
Yeah.
The west side of the building?
Right.
The decorative facade material, the brick, has only been installed where it would be exposed when the addition is added.
Right, I understand.
That's what they're proposing.
I mean, that's what I agreed to with Tractor Supply. I understand the concept why, why. I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
We, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we are going to, you know, clean it up and obviously paint it and make it look presentable. So it's not going to be just, you know, the hardcore block that's up there. We, I know we do intend on wrapping the corner.
Right.
It's going to be about 15 feet that comes back.
There's a return on it.
There's a return on it, right.
Sorry to get out of order.
No problem, no problem. Okay, so we've all got the staff memo dated July 6th. The first few pages there all relate to the background information that Troy's given us. So we're really looking to start on packet page 13. Project A, they're referring to as the Dairy Queen, and then project B being the building at the back. So we'll be talking A and B at the same time. That's the way it's been presented. So if we take a look, there's no impact assessment required, given that this is an existing shopping center. No traffic report required or generation of a report required because that was all taken into consideration when the center was developed. Access and circulation, there's no changes. There's no report or necessary documentation to provide. Down in the dimensional requirements, lot sizes, there are no minimum specified, but other than a PD being 20 acres, and we have 45 here, so not an issue. Road frontage, not an issue. Also required at 120 feet. They have 207. All the building setbacks are being met according to the presentation that we've been given. But when we flip the page over to 14, there's just a discussion necessary for the parking lot on the A building. Troy, could you just highlight what we're talking about?
Yeah, the east side parking lot and maneuvering lane over here, I'm not sure if you can tell, just where the Dairy Queen tenant space is, the drive-through lane, and then there'd be kind of a bypass lane. That's approximately one foot from the east side property line. So that's something for the planning commission to consider. Then conversely, on the other side over here, this is actually somewhat of a shared drive, access drive that comes in, and it is built right to the property line. This service driver or private drive, if you will, that kind of comes in to not only provide access to this site, but to the rest of the development to the south.
Okay. Any comments on that?
I, I'm fine with it. It's a redevelopment of an existing shopping center. I think we see encroachment in those types of things in plans of the old days. So is that working for you, Mike?
Yes, I don't have a problem.
Okay.
They actually modified some curb cuts and stuff up front anyway when they redid the rest of it.
Right. So I think note that the planning commission is acceptable. That is acceptable. Building height, it looks like we're okay. Lot coverage, there's nothing to find in the PD, but it would appear to be fine. Typical commercial site. Under the site requirements, the off-street parking, we have a requirement of 41 spaces. They're proposing 47, so it would meet the requirement. And given Dairy Queen in the summer, you'll probably need them. Big crowds there.
Chairman Fox, can I stop right there with the parking?
Uh huh.
We, we did run into one little hang-up where the architects forgot to spec out. We're maybe going to eliminate one parking spot because Dairy Queen needs a patio. So we'll be, that, that little island out there, we'd be eliminating one parking spot. Obviously, the patio would be-
Outdoor seating?
Outdoor seating and it'd have a gate around it.
So how does the, the planning commission feel about that? Generally, that is part of the site plan that is seen and is approved. It's also a good reminder to let applicants know when they have patios. We run into this sometimes where they want to have the patios and have a sign or logo and colors on the awnings and chairs and tables. Those generally are not permitted, and certainly the colors are, can sometimes be a concern. It's generally understood that those would be in kind of a neutral color, earth tone type color. So I'll just throw those things out as reminders for the planning commission as they consider this request.
Well, it's normally, as you said, in the site plan. Certainly Dairy Queen Ice Cream Store and sitting out on a table outside probably go hand in hand. Let's ask first, anybody have a problem with some outdoor seating out there and elimination of a parking space of which they're already exceeding the minimum?
I don't have any problem with the concept, but I wanted, I think, to see the concerns that, that we want to remain consistent since we've had a number of other, you know, restaurants with the seating outside.
Yep.
And so we have to try to suggest we make sure we have a note on the final site plan.
If we put it in the motion, that we, they must be compliant, is that what you're looking for? Yeah, the biggest thing I'm looking for is would the planning commission want that to come back before it for approval at a later time? Or would the planning commission be okay with approving an outdoor patio where you haven't seen how it looks, how it fits, and presuming that staff approves it in compliance with the PD and/or zoning regulations? So for me, the biggest hurdle is which process does this have to go through?
I would, I would support the concept of them providing on the construction drawings to the ordinance reviewed and approved by staff.
That's fine with me.
That works.
Does that work for you?
It works for me.
Okay.
Thank you for that. I very much appreciate it.
Yep, that's fine. Okay, so we'll be down in parking a spot or so. Barrier-free parking, it looks like we need two. We have four, so we would be fine there. The loading space, while not designated on the plan, there certainly is a large, oh, it is.
Yeah.
Large, large loading space on the backside, so we're all fine there. Dumpster enclosure, meeting the ordinance, so there isn't much discussion there. And then I guess, Troy, we just need to touch on the lighting. You're saying, do you want a photometric plan? We need a photometric plan?
No, I, I think we're, we're, we've got a-
Because there's one in the pack.
Yeah.
But this states-
Well, it's, there's a question of whether a revised photometric plan that's dated June 30th there. But there was just a question on, A, there, the light levels at property lines. You'll notice that although we're saying it's compliant, the maximum allowed along a property line to non-residential is one foot candle. They're at 1.1 foot candle on the north property line, which I don't know that I would be able to tell the difference if I were standing there. But, and also, just on the fixture types in E, those are the two primary areas I just wanted to draw to your attention with the lighting plan.
Any comments on the lighting?
No.
And the fixtures are, and it's becoming more and more common, the PD requires a, one type, but the technology has advanced with LED that I don't know anyone that even does that type anymore, so.
Yeah, and as we suggested with the other large commercial development, maybe not appropriate here, that in one of our PD amendments on the north side of 59, we should get that adjustment made in their book because there's a lot to be developed there. This development being pretty specific, it's an extension on the shopping center, maybe that's not required. But I would be fine with the light fixtures proposed.
I'd agree.
Okay. So looking at the landscaping, you'll notice that on your table, you have a new landscape plan. There was a typographical error that's been corrected. An item omitted. It looks like it's all been addressed. Are there any comments on any of the landscaping proposed?
I do have some comments.
Okay.
And also I have one on the sidewalk and the barrier-free ramps out front.
Okay.
First off, I want to address those. So in front of this store, what it looks like is we have that curb cut to allow up onto the sidewalk where you've got a ramp and a pad, and it looks like maybe behind it, there's a little bit of a curb to hold that ramp area lower. Am I clear on where I'm pointing in front of this store?
Yeah, the Rs.
Yep, the Rs. So those, I can do this.
In this area.
Right there and there. What I think is happening is the Rs are, that's a curb cut that's flushed down with the pavement so that somebody maybe, you know, handicap can get onto the sidewalk.
Yes.
And then what I think they do is then they, they come in right there in the middle, and then they go up the ramp or the ramp.
Uh huh, yes.
So when you have the cars parked in that area, the cars overhang about two feet, and those areas are only five feet deep. So what happens is two feet of the five feet is, the car is blocking. So you've only got three feet left for somebody to go up the ramp, and it's not wide enough. It's just a comment, okay? And typically, our code talks about the locks need to be about seven feet wide, just to accommodate that first two feet. So I think if you guys could work with your civil or whoever did that, I think you got to work out how you can get accessibility on those ramps. Because again, the car is going to overhang two feet, and you're going to only have three feet to squeeze through.
Yeah.
Just a comment.
That is a good comment. There's two things could be done that I can see.
Yeah, they can shift.
One is bumper blocks-
Yep.
Could be installed to prevent the cars from doing that in, at least in just these locations. Or two, the ramps could be widened. We just have to relocate these doors. And since, I don't think anything's been specifically designed as to where those doors are going to be, it's possible the doors could be shifted away from the ramps.
Are you seeing something different and I'm missing something?
I'm seeing eight feet on that front sidewalk.
It is. It's eight feet. But what you've got going on is you have this curb, that little horizontal line. So that curb is holding the grade so that it can be lower on the side of the parking lot?
Yes.
So then you only effectively have five feet that you can walk on. Can you explain about-
And then what happens is when cars pull in, as they would pull in here, they tend to rely on the curb to stop them, that they've gone in far enough. And so their tires will hit on the curb, meaning a portion of the car, approximately two feet, in some cases could be more, will overhang this sidewalk. So this ramp, which is five feet in width, will now have a vehicle overhanging to a portion of it. So that will make the width, unless somebody's strong enough to just go right through the car.
Maybe I'm, maybe, so if you look at the parking stalls, go back to the site plan?
Yeah, sure.
Go back to the parking stalls.
Right there.
If anybody that's going to park there is going to, it's not going to, they'll be parking on either side of the ramp and coming up the middle.
They sure will.
Yeah.
They will, but what's happening is-
But then they got to go this way.
Yeah, then they got to turn left or right.
But then the car will be overhanging in here.
I, we don't mind putting-
Yeah, blocks, something.
But is that, is that ADA compliant?
The bumper blocks?
Yeah.
Well, the bumper blocks would be to prevent the car from coming in any further here.
I mean, we don't mind doing that. That's all the problem.
That would be something that I think makes sense. Otherwise, you're going to be-
As long as they're ADA compliant, we're fine with it.
Yeah.
Right. So it's just a comment.
I didn't think that we could put a barrier there.
Well, the, you're coming in, I'll try to zoom in here, so you're with me. So you'll be coming in the ramp, this is somewhat hypothetical, you'll be coming in here, this is your access point to the sidewalk is at grade with the parking lot in this area. And then to get up to the rest of the sidewalk, you'll be coming up this ramp here to get up to the at-grade so you could enter in stores. With the vehicle parked in this location, that its front end could be extending into this area here, this ramp's width has now been diminished because a car is overhanging part of this ramp. And in order to make sure there's adequate room, trying to prevent the car from coming in all the way here.
I, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
If it takes a couple bumper blocks?
Yeah, that's all it is. It's just so that it works.
Okay, would you add that to the-
Sure.
Motion?
The next, the next thing I wanted though was to go into the landscape. Our ordinance talks about a green belt area that wasn't in the letter, but our minimum width for our green belt out front is 20 feet. And so what you've done is you've diminished that to 11 foot four behind the walk. So we have to talk about if we want to see where the trees have been cut down, they're leaving. It used to be wider out there, but now we've brought our green belt to less than 20, and that's our minimum. So we need to talk about if we want to allow that.
This is in the rear?
In the front.
The front?
Yep, between the sidewalk and your frontage site, we have a green belt requirement. I don't know why it wasn't brought up in the review letter, but that's where it needs to be, at least 20 feet minimum. And today, it looks like where those trees are that are coming out, it must be at least 20, 25 feet. So we're reducing it.
Where would you pick up the nine feet? Do you have a suggestion?
I don't. I, you'd have to whole lay, lay out the whole thing and figure out how to do it.
That would kill, that would kill a whole row.
And I don't, I don't want to kill it, but it wasn't brought up. We just have to talk about if we want to-
Yeah.
You know, do that.
Well, the zoning has a requirement, but the PD has a, has waived some of the setback standards.
Sure.
So that's just more or less a question, how does the planning commission feel about that? Is that something that they are concerned with?
Should we change it from what it is today? Because you can see today, those trees are out there in the green belt.
Yeah, my concern would be wiping out that row of parking, which would throw it under.
Yeah.
Which would probably kill it, the project.
Plus, this is a rehabilitation of a site. I mean, it's a site that is right on 50, you know, on 59.
Right, yeah, just, I just want to bring it up. It's something that we're changing from the original layout and the original PD.
Consistent with what we're doing.
Yeah, so we're just, I just want to-
Now, the actual, the actual curb of the road is, is different than that, though, if I'm looking at that plan because it looks like there's a distance greater than 11 feet to the curb. Am I seeing that correctly? Because I'm seeing a-
If you go to the site, the site plan would help because it has a measurement from the, right there, is that 11, four? That's where you measure it, from the right-
Yeah, that's where you measure it, but to, to, to really get into it, is this not the curb of the road?
Yes, that's the curb.
So we're 11 feet here, but we're probably greater than 11 because that looks like greater distance. So we're not, we're, we're 11-
Yes.
In the green belt.
Right.
But in terms of grass area-
Yes.
We're probably 11 and whatever that is, I'd call it 15.
Sure.
So you're 26.
Exactly.
Which makes accepting 11 a lot easier-
Right.
Because it's not right on the road. I would be more concerned with cutting down parking.
Right.
And/or making and reduce the building to get the parking down, to widen the green belt, and then-
Right. Yeah, just, I just, we just have to-
We have to accept it?
Yeah.
Yep, no, and I, and I understand and appreciate that. What is anybody else's opinion?
No, I agree.
I'm okay.
Are you okay with it, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Landscaping, more?
Yep, I'm just going to keep going through the list of things. So the other thing we have is landscaping around the building. We've got a rule where 60% of the front and sides that are running on parking lot or private drives need to have landscaping around them. It was brought up in the letter, where the landscaping is, it's on the west side of the building. And I just, I just want to make sure we're good with that. So as you can see, the building on the west side, that's where the landscape is. We're supposed to have a lot more. So again, if we want to make an exception so it all fits, that's another thing that we're going to have to concede to. Not a big deal, but I'm just, I want to point those things out. And then the last thing, and I see you caught it, you moved the grease trap for a while it was on the tree.
Yeah.
Down in that lower island below the store, you've got a transformer somewhere about right there that's right next to the tree. We have a requirement to screen it. Maybe you guys can just shuffle things around so we can at least get the tree-
Oh, definitely. We screen them anyways.
And just screen it, yep, and then just maybe move the tree a little further because it's like maybe four feet away. So it'll be kind of hard for both.
I'll, now, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
The other thing was, with that requirement for the patio too, it's the, the landscaping that's in front of the Dairy Queen, that's going to be eliminated. So just knowing that, wanting to make sure that everybody knows that.
What you're talking about is up into this area right here?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that'll now become all hardscape without any, so we've got a lot- So that'll now become all hardscape without any, so we've got a lot.
Well, it's gonna probably double in size.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be concrete, because you're probably gonna get four or six tables out there, whatever you can fit within that space.
It'll have railings, and I'm sure maybe, I mean, as the tenant proceeds, they probably put planters out there.
Yeah, that would help.
Yeah.
The activity out there is a good thing.
Yep.
My last one is the screening of the parking lot. I see on your new plan, you've added the Rosa that wasn't on there, it's the knockout rose. And that's your frontage screening, screening that you've got, and that's like all along here, those are all those RK. So our ordinance requires, you've got some options, you can do a wall, you can do a berm with a mix of deciduous, which the roses are, and evergreen, or you can do all evergreen. So the simple thing would be for you, is you could maybe mix in some evergreen to it, but we try to screen the parking lot, and that requirement isn't quite met per our ordinance.
Would that, if we could get a change in some of those roses to evergreen, would that work for you on relief for the landscaping required at the foundation of the front of the building also?
Yeah, because I mean, again, I'm just pointing out, we've got everything mapped to get this building in.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
But I think if we could at least try to, you know, minimize the view of all that, I think that would go a long way.
Not a problem. We can definitely do that.
Since we have a landscape person on staff also, could we allow staff to approve a modification?
Exactly.
Is the commission okay with that?
Yes.
Mike? Okay, so if we could make note of that at the end.
Yeah, okay.
Are you okay with all of that?
Hey, I'm just, I'm just here to say yes, so.
Okay.
Oh, well, in that case. Any other questions from anyone on landscaping? For the most part, it looks very nice, a few notations that Sue brought up for us.
And the building's gonna be awesome.
Right. So we're all set on our water supply and wastewater disposal, our building materials, we need to talk about that briefly. I'm already on page 17 of the packet. I think you talked with Troy today.
Yes.
About the.
Ephes, yes.
The Ephes. The PD that we negotiated with this particular development allowed Ephes to be used for trim only, and it's being used in excess of that. It's the upper third of the walls on three sides. Are you comfortable in changing that material to the same brick that's running up the walls?
Yeah, that's just a huge added cost. Our original plan was to screen the HVAC units up top, but I knew that you guys wouldn't like that, so we had them change it prior to even coming out. We're fine with that, yeah.
Okay. Just for your background, you weren't part of it. Part of the, part of the negotiation when the PD went together was allowing the particular type of brick that you're using on this building, which is less than we would typically see. But we allowed that to get more brick on the buildings, and some of the exchanges that we had with the improvements to M-59, there was a donation to the land conservancy for some land behind your, your and Walmart's development. So are you guys comfortable with that? Making that change?
Hmm.
Okay, so if we could make that notation. Did you get a yes out of you, Mike?
This is, this is Ephes, well.
This is the.
Okay, so we're, this is, really, the rest of the building, we can run around it, pretty much matches what you've got in the strip center itself.
That's a.
And, and I would agree with Sue, pretty attractive looking. So just a question while we're on it, I know you got three doors over on the right, but you got a 4,800 square foot space, so we could conceivably see one, two, or three tenants in that far right-hand side.
Yeah, the tenants we're speaking to, probably each one of them, a couple that we are, one's maybe 1,500, the other one's 1,200.
Yeah.
And then maybe a, call it a fast casual restaurant, where it's just a, you know, on the very end cap.
Okay.
So that's what we're thinking. But there's also one of those, there might be an extra door over there, because that's right next to the proposed, our fan would be a, a riser room that we would need for the building. So that's why when, there's also another door over there. So there is four doors there.
Okay.
One of those would be for the riser room.
Okay, great. Any other questions on Project A, which is the Dairy Queen teardown and the replacement with this building? If not, we can move on to Project B, which is that at the rear of the development, a refurbishing or redoing of the old food town store previously for a short time on approved site plan for Tractor Supply. So we're on packet page number 18, and really, we jump right all of a sudden on packet page 18 into the architecture. This is where maybe Troy, you can show that second picture, Keith was talking about that.
So this is the west elevation. So up here at the top is kind of the front facade that they're doing. And then this is the west elevation, so it has a wraparound part of it here that the applicant would continue to match what he's doing on the front. But then what he's done is he's kinda shown the line of future retail, so this would match up in a butt, a future building. And so the applicant did not want to install the same building material here on this portion of the building.
Troy, I'm sorry to cut you off, but there is a mistake on that plan. That Ephes on the top, that ribbon is not going to go to the length of the building. It'll wrap the corner and stop.
Right over here?
Yes.
All right. So that would be a, if, if you heard the applicant correct, that's a change of the plan from even what you see right now, so.
So you just make a note of that one, and then we'll, we'll get that taken care of. So if anyone in the commission is not familiar, if you were to take a look at the current target facility and look at the west side of the building, you'll notice that the west side of that Target store is treated in a very similar fashion. There is a plan for another commercial facility to abut that, and at that time, when that was approved, the township didn't require them to put the finished brick on a wall that ultimately would be covered up. So would you, just a question, do you think you're gonna be painting that the red color of the brick, like you are the back, or do you have a thought of what you're doing?
The color you want, I, something to match it, I would think, and match the back to that red color.
Since you're painting the back of the building that color, if you just wrapped it around it.
Yep.
Somewhat wouldn't stand out, I would think.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
Any questions or comments or thoughts on that? Other than that, it looks very familiar on the front side from what we saw a few months ago.
We did add more glass to the front from the original tractor supply. There's two, two more base, one on each side.
So if you're okay with that, also notice they're extending on the back of the building the wall up two feet to extend the parapet wall across the, what would be the south side of the building, as we had requested on the, right there. So they're adding two feet to screen the equipment from view and noise coming across the lake behind it. And then they're planning on painting the back of the building as it was an existing cinder block type wall, and we allowed Tractor Supply to do the same. So is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I guess we can take a look at the dumpster enclosure over here. It meets all the requirements according to staff, other than no landscaping included because it's in the parking lot up against the building.
Yeah.
So nothing's gonna survive that.
No.
And it's behind. Troy, the next paragraph is probably the one you're telling us that we are to ignore this evening.
Yeah, he's, that's not really part of his request, is to get the additional future buildings. He's just merely showing those so that he's not required to do the facade and this elevation in the same fashion, so.
So since it's still different than what the approved was, if we could get in the minutes that, a notation that we're not approving the addition, the extension as drawn, that it was there for just a representation of potential.
We should have labeled that more properly, future.
If we get it in the meeting minutes, it'll be good, and then when you come back, I think we all know there's more building coming. We hope soon.
Hopefully.
We hope soon.
But it would be, if you look at the succession of the development, originally it was approved with a building there, then that site plan got modified with Tractor Supply to have a garden center, and then this wall was required to be slightly improved upon and made to be more upscale. And now he's kinda requesting to go back to more the original approval of this or but, a building, so.
Yeah, and maybe it's a paragraph in the notes. My issue with approving what's on the plan is that it's 12,500 square feet bigger than what was approved, and we're not seeing anything but a line on a piece of paper.
Right.
And I think we need to know what it is that is bigger.
Well, on, on, on the resubmission, we'll make sure that that says future.
Okay.
That you have with the other corrections that you, that staff's going to take a look at.
Yeah. Last up is parking here. So we've got a requirement of 988 spaces. By current calculations, we're at 1175, including 44 banked. There really is no parking lot, changes being proposed.
No, and that's just showing, even with the future addition that he's kinda got shown there, there'll be sufficient parking on the side too.
Okay. All right, last up, all of our consultants' comments, our DPW, our engineer, and our fire authority, have you taken a look at those letters? Are you good with everything?
Yes.
Everything's fine? Are there any questions or comments?
Nope.
I have a couple.
Sure, Keith.
I don't think it was mentioned tonight, but I think I read or heard somewhere, the footprint of the building is approximately the same size as the original, is that correct?
Yes.
Footprint of the new building?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay. And then on one of the drawings here, on the elevation drawing, on the east elevation drawing, you have a, a little dashed area that indicates a future sign. I don't think that'd be compliant with our ordinance, sign on that side of the building. So just so that you know, don't come back later and say, well, you approved it with a drawing.
Okay.
On the east side of this building?
The Dairy Queen.
Oh, Dairy Queen.
I'm sorry, on the Dairy Queen.
Okay.
Yeah, they'd have to come in anyways for their sign.
Well, just so they, I mean, we don't want you, the argument later to say, well, you approved the drawing at the, at the meeting, and it had that dashed in area on there. That's all I'm trying to.
Okay.
Okay. So it's a good point, just for the record, nothing regarding signage is being approved tonight, it's all administratively done on a separate application.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, Keith?
No, sorry.
Sue? No, you're fine. Sue?
No.
Anything, Joe?
No.
Mike? Anything? And I have nothing more this evening, so if you're so inclined, unpack at page number 20, about a third of the way down, you'll see a motion from staff. If you're so inclined, you also would need to add the comments that we've added this evening, please.
I, I think I'm ready for a motion. Stay with me, because I may have missed one, so I wanted to give it a shot here. Move to approved site plan number 17-011. A request to amend the previously approved plans for Walmart slash Heartland Marketplace plan development, which include raising the existing multi-tenant building on Highland Road M-59, and constructing an approximate 11,200 square foot multi-tenant building on the same site, with one drive-through window dedicated to Dairy Queen, labeled as Project A, and Project B, which includes exterior facade renovations to the existing vacant commercial building adjacent to the Dollar Tree, adding a dumpster enclosure and adjusting the square footage of four.
No.
No, we're gonna take that line off. Yeah, we don't want that on there. Okay. And with the following conditions, the applicant shall adequately address the outstanding items noted in the planning department's memorandum dated July 6, 2017, on the construction plan set, subject to an administrative review by the planning staff prior to issuance of a land use permit. Applicant complies with any requirements of the Department of Public Works Director, Township of, Public Works Director, Township Engineer, Consultant, and Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority. Let's see. Okay, number three, outdoor seating must be compliant with ordinance and, the Heartland Township ordinance, and reviewed and approved by staff. Add parking curbs to the parking lot in the front of the Dairy Queen to prevent vehicles overhanging into the sidewalk. Number five, adjust planting type of materials to mix with evergreen to screen the parking lot in the north elevation, and allow staff to approve. I think there's another one that is. And then Project B, change the final site plan to, to reflect the Ephes trim, only to come around on the return on the west elevation. Thought there was one.
If we can get a second first. Will you second that?
Can I just add a couple more?
Could you second it first?
Second, I second it.
All right, okay. Now, what would you like to, you guys talk about?
Well, I must admit, so.
Um, let's see here. I think we approved that Ephes, right? That's consistent with the rest of the development.
I think that's the one.
No, he's only talking about the former Tractor Supply building so far. He hasn't talked about the Dairy Queen building on the three sides.
Yeah.
Replacing the Ephes to match the brick on the building.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say, but, yeah, something like that. And then we're gonna screen the transformer, that was another thing, he'll update the plan with that at the Dairy Queen, and then we're going to allow the green belt width to be reduced as we approve to the plan. Those were the things I had in addition.
Okay, so anybody else have anything else that we may? We don't usually get them with a lot of conditions, but we are, we're gonna get it done. Are you okay with all those changes?
I'm, I'm fine.
Certainly, you're okay with them, you made them. Everybody understand what we are voting on. So this is a approve, approval of site plan application number 17-011 with the conditions stated. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carries. Congratulations and thank you very much for improvement of your property.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
All right.
Are we still voting on the other one? Or are we?
It's all in.
All in that one.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
You're good. You can start breathing easier.
Thanks so much. Troy, thank you for all your help.
Keep that.
All right, let's pull up next on the agenda, site plan application number 17-009. David Wiliker, request to construct a one-story office and warehouse building for the proposed Ben Franklin Plumbing, Mr. Sparky Electrical, and one-hour mechanical. We'll allow them a minute here to get themselves set up. Now, Troy, when we get into this, you've got this in the packet, too, don't you?
The drawing?
The architecture?
Yeah.
Yeah, while we get there. So. All right, if you'd like to have a seat, what we'll do, the same thing, we'll turn the floor over here in a minute or very quickly here to Troy, and he'll introduce the project. Anything you'd like to add, and then we'll go through the staff report the same way. Okay?
Sounds great.
Troy?
So let me begin by just kind of outlining where this property is located. This being M-59 towards the top of the screen up there, and of course, this being 23 going north and south. The property is along, it's kind of sandwiched in between old US-23 and, I guess it's not new US-23, but it would be saying, have frontage on both old US-23 and US-23. So as you would come south from 59, this is the property right here. It's currently undeveloped. The property to the north, well, as I say undeveloped, there is a portion of a fenced area that has some storage on the property in the southern property line here. The vast majority of it, though, is undeveloped. Property to the north is developed. Property to the south is developed. It's in the light industrial zoning category. And what the applicant is proposing to do on this property is construct a new facility that will house Ben Franklin Plumbing. It will house Mr. Sparky Electrical, and then a one-hour heating and air conditioning facility here. It's about a 13,700-square-foot building. It has its access coming in from old 23 onto the site. It has primarily office that will house all of those uses, and then there's a warehouse facility to the back and a center courtyard in the middle. And this project requires site plan approval from the planning commission. Assuming the planning commission approves it, then the applicant would move on to essentially construction and land use permits from the township engineer and township staff. So that is, in a nutshell, what the project is. And I'll leave for any questions or comments that you might have.
All right, Troy? If you'd like to introduce yourself and anything you'd like to add.
Okay, well, my name's Dave Wiliker. I'm here tonight representing Dave and Carla Michael, who is sitting behind me. I've had the pleasure of working with Dave and Carla Michael for the last 15 years or so. They started their Ben Franklin Plumbing business in our project pretty much across the street called the Hartland Commerce Center. They started off pretty small and consistently grew over the last 15 years. We've moved them into a larger facility and in the complex. And currently, they're in a, one of our buildings. They have half of a building that they, and they're busting out at the seams as they have before. It's after a lot of debate and a lot of searching for the right piece of property, we found this piece that serves their purpose well. They would like to construct a standalone building that they can hopefully not grow out of anytime soon. It has features that accommodates their office staff in front of the building and their warehouse requirements for their techs that are out in the field. The nature of their business is they perform service work for plumbing, electric, and heating. Imagine, they're hard to miss their trucks around the area. They have a lot of trucks on the road that well advertise what they do. They've built a business on punctuality and dependability that has worked real well for them. We are proposing this, this building that, again, it could serve us, serve their purpose well for the future. The property is actually a little larger than what we need for this particular building. And there is a spot to the south of the building that is purposely left vacant at this point that, given their track record of growth, we're anticipating that sometime in the future they may need that area for additional warehousing. The Michaels are life, have been longtime residents of the community. They want to continue to conduct their business here in the township. They have had the fortunate circumstances that the, the space that they're currently in is, is attractive to another party that would like to purchase it. They have entered into an agreement to sell their existing space, and the challenge is going to be getting the new space ready in time, too, so they can move directly into it by the time they have to get out. We're working off a pretty tight deadline, and, but we're doing our best to get them in by the end of the year, at least part of their, part of their, their business in there by the end of the year. But the, I've worked pretty closely with the staff, the planning staff here over the last month or so. We have a pretty detailed report as to the high points of our, our site plan, and I'm here to answer any questions as they come up.
Great, absolutely. So if we would like to grab the staff report, and they did this one also July 6. Must have been a busy day for you, too. Okay. And we can start right, packet page number 52, which is down at the bottom there. We can see no impact assessments required for this size of project, being in the ally district, an old US-23, traffic generation, no actual traffic study required for this project also. Moving on, lot size, they're meeting all their requirements. Their front, their frontage requirement is met. They need 120 feet. They have 374. All their building setbacks are met and in some cases greatly exceeded. Building height, we're okay with. Lot coverage, we're okay with. And I'm now down at the bottom of page 53, and we see site requirements, dumpster enclosure. You note it meets the ordinance. And our off-street parking requirements, we're doing fine there. They're 20 required. They have 29. And I think staff's giving you some explanation how they got to that number. Barrier free, we're good with. Parking lot, driveway, internal roads, we're good with. Loading spaces, we've got a "to be determined" on there. Troy, do you just want to highlight that real quick?
So based on how the loading spaces have been done in the past, onsite plans, the applicant certainly could provide an area in here that would meet it. Essentially, this portion of the site is designed as bays where trucks could back up to these bays, even enter into these, the warehouse portion of the building, if you will. So staff feels that there's sufficient area for loading, but there technically is not a designated loading space identified on the plan, so the planning commission would just have to determine, is that going to be okay, given the circumstance of this type of building and how it's set up?
Comments?
I'm comfortable with it. I mean, it's, it's designed as a loading area, basically, so.
Yes, if I could speak to that, that area that Troy's talking about right there has three overhead doors. They're intentionally, they're 14-foot tall, 12-foot wide overhead doors that are specifically designed to take large trucks in and out. We could put a label on the plan defining that as a, as a loading area, but it exceeds the requirements by about eightfold the minimum requirements.
Well, then it's just paint to wear off. I know, we all know what's going to go on. Is everybody good with that?
Absolutely.
All right, so let's move on to page, packet page number 55, access management, non-residential driveways. We're meeting all those requirements with driveway spacings and all of that. Little discussion, again, we get into it on this particular site in the landscaping area. Troy, just highlight real briefly what you're stating in the memo. We're getting a lot of overlays.
So the ordinance spells out a requirement for landscaping for different portions on the site. They'll require that there's landscaping on the perimeter of the site. There's a requirement of landscaping on the perimeter of the parking lot, requirement of landscaping around the perimeter of this stormwater detention area. And you can see, based on how this site is laid out, you've got a detention area and the landscaping associated with the perimeter of the detention area somewhat is next to the landscaping of the perimeter of the site, kind of on the north side, as well as on facing old 23. And so what I've highlighted out, or what's been highlighted in the staff report, is as you go through and analyze each individual area, there might be some areas that don't quite meet, but overall, the site has enough landscaping on there to comply. It's just, you're almost requiring two landscape areas here, for example, along old 23. You're requiring a landscape area where it butts 23 and a landscape area for the stormwater detention area, kind of right next to each other. So the question is, does the planning, is the planning commission okay with those two merging and blending as one? Or do you truly want two distinct, separate landscape areas in that one area? And that's kind of the, what's trying to be addressed in the staff report is, as you go through and analyze each separate landscape requirement for the different areas, they tend to blur into each other. Does that help explain what's?
It does, and just for the benefit of those that haven't watched our meetings and a refresher for some of us, when you get into these smaller sites, and I don't mean that this is really small, but this compared to a, you know, a 20-acre site or a 40-acre site where you have road frontage and detention and they're not overlaying one another, you don't have the type of overlap that we're getting. So what we're seeing here is, as Troy is describing, we're seeing an overlap of a detention requirement with a road frontage requirement and a parking requirement. Well, if we made them meet all of them, there would be no room for anything, but there would be nothing left but shrubs. It would be all shrubs and trees. So when we've run into these, we've taken a look at them as an overall plan. Do, conceptually, does this look like a well landscaped site? Meeting requirements in some areas and not others. I, probably Sue runs into this quite often in your business.
Yeah, I, I want to kind of step back on this whole plan.
Okay.
And right now, I'm noticing that the plan on the screen is not matching the plan in my packet. The plan in my packet on the, we'll just say on the west side, I'll point, I know. Thanks, Keith. Right there, there's landscape on my plan in there, and it looks like now maybe, is this parking?
If I could speak to that.
Yeah, this might be an older, this might be an older landscape plan.
Are we going with?
No, we're going with what you guys have.
With our packet?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I just pulled this up.
Okay, there you go, because that's got parking in our packet. That whole front area was landscape.
Let me pull up the, we had to do a revision on this, and I may have just pulled up the other plans before we got going. Nope, I think that's the wrong one, too.
Okay, just happened to notice that as I was going to start to kind of walk through.
Okay. Nope, I think this is the same. I think that's the same plan. I'll have to pull it up from the agenda.
Because that front elevations, you have a really nice building, you know, and it's a nice, I see where you put your landscape, kind of facing the road, which makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
So, you know.
If I could speak to the drawing that, that was on the screen?
Yeah.
Is, is the original plan?
Sure.
And we've modified it since then.
Yep, got it.
And what I have on this board here is probably what you have.
That's, that's right.
That is the packet for drawing, yeah. And he's pulling it up right here.
There you, yeah.
Page six.
Troy?
Okay.
Darren, that one's old, too. But what you've got to?
That's weird.
Isn't it?
It is, but my packet is.
What's on?
You know what, Troy, is it easy enough to run the table camera? Can we just lay that plan down?
Yeah.
That quick?
Give me two seconds. You've got the.
Dave, if you're not familiar with the program we have here, just take this blueprint and lay it right down on the table. There's a camera overhead. We've been looking at the top of your head the whole time.
I'm sorry.
Our packets agree.
Right here on here.
Yep, there you go. And you'll put it top towards us. Flip it around. And there's a, yeah. And then.
That's our package, sure.
Okay, this is the plan I reviewed.
Yeah, that's right.
So now, now that we have the right plans, Sue, how would you like to comment on landscaping?
So the first thing I want to comment on is back to our sidewalks that we talked about in the last plan. The sidewalks that are around this building are five feet wide.
Correct.
And the cars are going to overhang five feet, two feet. We'll have three feet left. So we either put bumper blocks like we did around the whole place, or we got to change something. And that should have been caught by the civil.
It is seven in front of a parking spot.
And that's in our ordinance. It's just you can picture, everyone's going to pull right up. The car's going to overhang, and you're not going to be able to use your woks. So they either have to grow, which really affects your plan on those sides by a couple feet.
We would.
Or you put your bumper blocks.
To address that. But honestly, I think, and I would like to consult.
Sure.
Sure.
Given the choice of bumper blocks and maybe widening the sidewalk a little bit, I think we might be in favor, with your permission, in favor of widening the sidewalk.
I think it's a better solution for cleaning of snow.
Bumper blocks, as much as they serve a purpose, they also are reflectors of debris and.
And plowing, it's a pain.
Around, they get, I don't know, they get beat up.
Yeah. I'm sorry that I'm pointing that out now. They should have caught that back on the original review, because I heard you're on a deadline.
Well, I would like to propose, if they're agreeable to that, that we allow that amendment on the construction plans, approvable by staff, but only after they agree that that's what you'd like to do.
Would it matter to the planning commission?
Either or.
Either or?
Let's leave it at that the resolution is to extend the sidewalk to seven feet or add the bumper blocks.
Okay.
They can decide at a future time, but it'll be presented at the, on the, on the final submittal, and staff can approve either or.
Cool.
Now, on that note, if we, if the choice was made to widen the sidewalk, what would be the desired width?
We need to need seven per ordinance. That's why I brought it up. Whenever the car overhangs, you got a comedy two feet of overhang.
Okay.
All right. Great.
The next, the next thing is the grading of your detention ponds. Our, our rules say that the slopes can be a one-on-five, which you have for most of it, but no steeper. And the front detention pond, and I'll point, right there, the first 10 feet is one-on-four. It's too steep. So we just need your guy to massage and make it per code. Otherwise, you have to put a fence around it. I don't think you want that.
We don't want a fence, and we, and honestly, I thought we had it right, but, but I will tell you, that is an area also that got modified as we make some changes.
Sure.
That we needed to move some things around to get, make, make provisions for a monument sign in the front.
Okay.
So that slope might have been trimmed up a little bit.
Sure. Yeah, it's close. It's just, yeah, especially right up, right by where you park, and I know that they'll get on a guardrail or something.
We have to adjust that.
Okay. Um, next is, the big idea in our township is when we do have this detention pond here, and then if you go to, down to the south, the other detention pond on the other side of the drive, if you go down, Troy, there's another one lower.
Yep. Oh, maybe easier to move the board.
Do you want to move this?
Slide your board.
Yeah.
Slide your board.
So that we can, oops. There you go, that one. So in our ordinance, when we have detention ponds, the number one thing it says is, we want to try to make them look natural and not shaped especially like this one, that's just like a rectangle.
Yeah.
Can you guys, the nuts, it's so it's just a little more less engineered and a little more natural, because it's right in your front yard. If it was behind.
We made this more of a kidney bean.
Something, just, and read the ordinance. I don't, but it just is supposed to be more.
Yeah.
And if it wasn't right up front next to the road, that that was kind of the whole intent of allowing, if it is in the front, to be a little more natural. Okay?
Get that down, Keith. You don't have a specific requirement as to exact.
No, it's just the intent of the whole ordinance. It just says no geometric, no squares, no rectangles, no. Unfortunately, that's pretty much the definition of the no.
We'll be happy to adjust that.
And then really, the last big part is, your landscape plan, whoever did it, I don't think it was a landscape designer, okay, and this is why I'm going to say it. Number one, the plants are not fully labeled, and they're not labeled correctly. A good example would be you call out juniper, but then you call the common name arborvitae. There's a gazillion juniper. There's like thousands. There's low ones, there's medium ones, there's tall ones. There's no way that we can even evaluate what ones you're putting in. When you drew the juniper, whoever did it, or the yews, or the arborvitae, they're about a three-foot width, probably. They've all been drawn as trees. They're 10-foot drawn. They're three times bigger. So they're not even drawn at the right size. There's a lot of that deficiency, so I, I just need somebody to go back in, fill out the names, so we know what it is.
Genus and species?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and do them correctly, and then size them per scale. Because right now, like an example around this, this pond, what they say is they want it in natural groupings, not in a line, all this stuff. And now we've just got basically all these borders, and it's not really, again, meeting the intent. And we can't even really tell when like that circle there, that's a shrub, but it's looking like a tree. So it's really, it's just not really even reading what you're trying to do.
So labeling it with genus and species and having the.
Drawn to the.
All plants labeled, but having the, it more to scale versus.
To the side, so we know, you know. And you know. To the side so we know, you know, you know too. So it's not a surprise where you've got a shrub. And then you've got seven feet of something and another shrub.
Okay.
So it's going to end up where you're just going to go, oh my gosh, who's going to mow around all that? So I mean, it's just, the whole thing just needs another layer.
Okay.
So I, I don't know who did it, but it's just, Tony's just got to come through.
Our engineers, one of the staff or the engineering, the living's engineering.
Sue, on that one, what would be your suggestion if we were trying to complete this this evening?
I know. I don't know if we want to have the staff review it, you know, around. I mean, I thought she did.
Well, she, she's got a note at kind of the end of the landscape is that exact comment in the staff report of getting at least the botanical genus and species name of the plant materials. Because there's, I'm not a landscape expert, but when you say juniper, that can mean many different things. And so it's not, well, which one is it? Is it one of 10? Which, and they can be different. So it's more, some of that is just getting an actual list that identifies exactly what they are and then verifying if those are okay in those locations. And I think if the planning commission's okay, those are things that the staff along with Commissioner Grissom, we could work that out during construction phase or pre-construction phase.
Yeah, I, I would be in support of that. I mean, the applicant in this particular case has worked very diligently to get this and I, I think if we have an opportunity to work at staff and maybe Sue finalizing that with you towards the end, that that would be a benefit to everybody involved.
We would certainly appreciate it. And just so that I don't give you something other than what you're looking for, if we take this plan, if I understand that the number of plants may be okay, but the representation is not correct.
Right.
That the symbols that are used on the plan are not to scale.
Sure.
And that they should be more appropriate to the scale of the plant that it's representing. And it should be defined by its genus and species as opposed to the generic.
Yeah. And I'll give you one more example so that it will be clear to you. If you can just move your board down so we can see that front area, there, there you go. So like here, I'll just show you another one when you're doing your plan again. Stop, you can hold it still.
In the area you want?
Yeah, you are. See this right here, this whole front area?
Yep.
Those guys are shrubs you've got and then you've got another row of shrubs, but you've got a big area there that I don't know if that's all mulch, if it's lawn. If you put those shrubs out there, you'd be having about 15 feet of mulch.
I got it.
So once you draw it to scale, you'll kind of know, okay, is this part lawn? So that will really help.
We can do that.
Well, and that'll help.
Yeah.
That'll help the people writing the check knowing what you're getting.
Yeah, exactly. Because otherwise, you're going to see like, oh my gosh, you know?
So if we could work through those issues with a comment at the end in the motion, if you're so inclined this evening to allow staff and Sue to get through that. Any other questions on landscaping?
Not I.
Not you? Anybody else? Okay, I'm on packet page 56. We're all the way down actually, so you must be fine with the ground mounted equipment being screened, Sue. So now I'm on package 57. Sidewalks and pathways, we talked about the seven foot sidewalk around the building that abuts the parking spaces. Lighting to be determined. Troy, what are you referencing there?
So there's, on the lighting plan, there's a number of things they have to meet. They have to meet the, a maximum foot candle and the property lines, a maximum foot candle at the entrance and kind of an average, if you will, over the entire site. Can't exceed, I think it's five foot candles. I think they're at 5.4 foot candles as an average on the site. So the planning commission will have to just provide comments and give feedback on that element and give direction to the applicant or indicate they're okay with that.
Well, I know we just went through this on the previous meeting that we had. It's probably an easy enough thing to get them to dial the entrance down to the 5.0, the limit.
Yes.
If you just tell them you want it to be five, they'll make the bulb, they'll make the fixture be five.
Again, these are LEDs.
Right.
There's, there's lots to pick from.
Right.
The area that, if I understand the report, the area of concern here is, is just at the front entry. The rest of the site falls within the boundaries and right at the front entry, there's a spot that is at 5.4 versus 5.0. I wholly expect that with a small adjustment, we can make up that small difference.
Yeah, that's what we've been asking people to do. So if you could do that, that would be great. Got that one done, Keith?
I have one comment and a question, basically. On the lighting schedule, I have one model number for a light fixture, A1, I'm not, I'm sorry, W1, I assume is a wall unit. Okay, you have, you have a, a model number of a light fixture.
Yes.
On the schedule. However, the picture you supplied is different with a different model number. I just want to make sure you have a downward facing.
Yes.
Wall.
What you, as much as we, this is another area that we had some follow-up after initial review. Martha did contact me and said that the original wall pack, the W1 that was proposed, had too much facial exposure to the, to the bulb and wanted something that was, was more restrictive. So we sent a cut sheet over and had our lighting engineers take a look at it and they came up with a different fixture that's in the, in the package that is, it is a down shield.
All right, well, without the cut sheet here, I couldn't tell if this model number reflected that new light fixture or not. So that's why I'm asking.
Okay, well, yes, the, the answer is that the most recent submittal is a down facing wall mount light.
Okay. You could add that as a, just to verify that it is, since we don't have that particular one. Great. Anything else on the lighting? Any comments, questions? I'm moving on over to page, packet page number 58. Fixer height is fine, fixture type we just talked about. We're going to have an onsite well and public sanitary sewer. We have architectural requirements. It would appear as though they're meeting those with a note that rather than the four inch, they're using a three inch siding. Assume that's acceptable to everyone. Signage, just a note that we're not approving any signage, even though that's on the plan, that's under a separate application and approved by staff.
Yes.
Any concerns or comments with DPW Fire Marshal Engineers reviews? You've seen their letters. Are you good with everything?
We're good with all the reports.
Okay. Any other questions for, comments? If not, you'll see on packet page number 59, about halfway down, a recommended motion from staff.
Sue, take care of it because I lost track of her.
I'll try. Okay. So I make a motion to move to approve site plan 17-009, a request to construct a one-story office and warehouse building approximately 13,700 square feet in size. Approval is subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall adequately address the outstanding items noted in the planning department's memorandum dated July 6, 2017, on the construction set, subject to an administrative review by the planning staff prior to the issuance of a land use permit. Two, applicant complies with any requirements of the Department of Public Works Director, the Township Engineering Consultant and Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority. And then three, here comes the things we talked about, about the walk width, that it should be seven foot wide or you could use the bumper block, but we've got to meet what the ordinance requires for at least that five foot clearance due to the car overhang.
Yes.
The detention pond grading to make sure that the grading conforms, that the slope's not greater than the one-on-five. And also the shaping of the pond so that they more conform to the intent of our ordinance, more naturalistic. Resubmit the landscape plan just to address the many issues that we talked about between, you know, the calling out the plants fully to scale, all that. And then also, I think the last one was something about the down facing wall mounted light fixture.
Verification.
Verification of that. That was the, the wall pack that Keith mentioned? It's more down facing, so not so much of that, just to have verification of the fixture you're going to use.
Well, it is for whatever that's worth, it is in your package.
Okay.
It's in there.
Sure.
I think what it is, is we've got the old one in there, too.
Yeah.
We have the old cut sheet, we have the different model numbers.
Martha could probably help us with that.
We believe you, we trust you. We just want to get, when we get to a construction set of plans or a plan that is a final plan approved, we want to make sure that all the documentation is right. So if anybody ever looks, they know what it is. Okay?
Did I miss something?
You probably know who that Christian.
That's going to be.
You're going to do a second on that with, okay, now I will ask, are there, is there any further discussion or comment?
I think we also want to add, as the last note, adjust the front entry lighting to meet the 5.0 foot candle.
Thank you. Yeah.
And you're good with that?
Yes.
So now we are going to vote here in a moment on the site plan application number 17-009. This is with some conditions as stated here. Are there any questions? Everybody know what you're voting on? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those may motion carries. Congratulations.
Very good.
Thank you. And thank you for keeping your business in Heartland. We appreciate it.
A very attractive building as well.
Is your spokesman going to be there for your grand opening? Mike Rowe?
I figure he'll be there.
So you're all set?
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Troy?
Yep.
Yep. Yep, absolutely.
I'll have to review the meeting.
All right, I think we're ready to move on to our next item. This is item C, Plan Development Agreement number 17-012. This is to amend the Heartland Estates Development Agreement to modify lot coverage standards for Heartland Estates. You guys want to do this without coming up front or you want to see if we can handle it or would you like to come up? All right, if you have anything to add, we'll allow you to come forward. Why don't we turn it over to Troy? He's probably got a pretty good explanation of what's going on here this evening.
This is a zoning map of the township with M59 somewhat in the middle, 23, also somewhat in the middle, going north and south. This would be Heartland Estates in this general area here. It's, it was developed as a plan development, which is the white with crosshatch configuration designation here. The Heartland Estates subdivision was approved a number of years ago. The developers here as one of the applicants, 2001, I think is the date that it received its approval. It has about 155 homes in that subdivision. As part of the PD, there's a number of specific open space areas. I'll zoom in on this zoning map. I think it, for the most part, shows it fairly well. And it gives a good comparison, this being Heartland Estates. This area over here is not Heartland Estates, so it's, it's just this area in here. And you can see when you look at Heartland Estates and compare to subdivisions to the south, and if you look at the amount of open space in those subdivisions and kind of compare it to Heartland Estates. Heartland Estates has approximately 57 acres of open space. That's, that's over 35% of the entire subdivision that was set aside as open space. One of the, well, the reason that this project is here is when the development was approved, there was no specific lot coverage standard that was provided for this subdivision. They allowed the lots to be smaller in area than the typical SR zoning would allow. They required, or as part of the approval, it has much more open space. One of the, well, the reason that this project is here is when the development was approved, there was no specific lot coverage standard that was provided for this subdivision. They allowed the lots to be smaller in area than the typical SR zoning would allow. They required, or as part of the approval, it has much more open space. One of the things we discovered that's come up is that the lots are having trouble complying with that lot coverage standard. There's a number of homes in there that may currently not comply with it. It appears, based on some of the research we've done, even some land use permits that may have been issued where they don't totally comply with the lot coverage standard. What's happened is that the township planning staff is somewhat new and in examining it was reluctant to continue to issue land use permits where it wasn't in compliance. And the developer, Mr. Rotundo, was an applicant, wanted to construct a new home somewhat consistent with other homes he's constructed in this subdivision. The township staff informed him, well, we can't proceed with this particular plan. It doesn't comply with the lot coverage standards. And that just expanded into examining a number of the other homes in there. The, about the only option we have was to amend the PD to specify a lot coverage standard for this particular subdivision that would be consistent with what's out there and would also be consistent with the amount of open space that's provided in the subdivision. What I've done is we've taken the original site plan that was submitted for Mr. Rotundo's home, proposed home, and we've expanded upon that to illustrate hypothetical scenarios of what lot coverage would look like at various percents. The home that was submitted was at 24.8%, which would include a driveway here, a garage, a house and no deck. So just that house right there exceeds the 20% coverage. And what we did is said, well, what would 30% look like? So we drew a typical deck and we even drew a pool, no, an indoor or not indoor, but in-ground swimming pool that would be somewhat consistent with other swimming pool sizes in this area. And the swimming pool itself does not count towards the lot coverage, but then the concrete patio around it would. And we modified the patio around it to get to 30%. And so this is what 30% lot coverage would look like if the ordinance permitted a maximum of 30%. And what we also did was draw a 40% one. I wanted to just at least outline some of the concerns with 30%. Township looked at, staff at least looked at the, this is only about five foot of concrete width around this pool. In fact, it doesn't even come up to about the back of the house. So this leaves very little concrete area or patio area around the pool. And so the thoughts are that 30% still doesn't get us to what would be a typical development in this area and what you typically would find in this particular subdivision. So what we did is expand upon this and make it into a 40% plan. This is showing 40% coverage. We've now increased the width of the driveway. We've got a much larger deck coming all the way to the back of the rear setback. We've effectively made the, the remainder of the rear setback area concrete around that pool and we've constructed even in addition, that's to get to 40%. So when examining the. So when examining the 40% plans, staff felt, well, this is probably a little too much for lot coverage in this subdivision. The 30% is probably not enough lot coverage to be consistent, which is why the township is recommending 35% as a standard for this particular subdivision. With that, I'll just leave it open for any questions or comments that you might have.
Any questions, comments?
No, I'll move to recommend approval of plan development, amendment 17-012.
Comment.
Usually you can comment after you have the motion.
All right. All right, keep going.
17-012, a request to modify the PD agreement for Heartland Estates to incorporate a maximum of 35% lot coverage standard for Heartland Estates condominium development based on the following findings. One, the entire Heartland Estates residential development already contains approximately 36% open space within which the, uh-oh, my computer's dying. Which is a unique feature for this development and allows for the individual site condominium units to have a higher lot coverage standard. Two, the planned development PD for Heartland Estates permitted smaller site condominium units that would then would have been otherwise be permitted in the SR suburban residential zoning district. Many of the exist, three, many of the existing single-family homes on the individual site condominium units within Heartland Estates already exceed the existing lot coverage standards.
Can I get a second?
I'll support that.
Okay. Now, is there any discussion? Sue.
I looked at it also another way, because I liked what you did with the diagram. So what I did is I said, what happens if you came in and just did a conventional zoning? And when I looked, there's in our ordinance, there's a part where it says if you have a subdivision, first off, you have to have 25% open space, and you had 36. So I said, okay, if we have to already have 25%, 40 of your acres has to be open, but you've got 57. So then I said, well, what happens if you beef it up, you know, from your 20% to your 35%? And how much would that use? And it kind of became dead even with conventional zoning. Now, I don't know what the recognizable benefit part was with the whole PD, but at least you're not more dense. You're just kind of like right there. So I just kind of like to check it that way, too. Just a comment.
Yes, some of the other problems this particular subdivision has, all of the garages have to be side-load garages. One advantage of that is the front facade of the house, there's a general desire in some developers' eyes to not have so much of the front facade of the house covered with garage doors. And by having a side-load garage, it gives it a different architectural look and feel as if a vast part of the house isn't garage. But the downfall of the side-load garage is you're requiring almost twice as much driveway coverage on your lot. And that's one of the big hurdles with complying with the lot coverage standard in this subdivision. And it might not just be unique to this subdivision, but since we're just focusing on this subdivision.
Right. And I'll just add to the comments, supporting it. If you drive through Heartland Estates and look at it, nothing looks abnormal. It's been approved all along for essentially, without having the permission to do it. And all we're doing is giving them what they've been getting, but putting it in a document that will not raise a question for now until forever. So I would support that also. Mike, any comments?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Are we in a situation where we have some of the lots in this Heartland Estates where the actual house footprint exceeds the lot coverage?
I don't know about that. It's, I couldn't, when we went through and calculated it, we're looking at the ordinance, and I put it in the staff report, what's required to be included in lot coverage. It's houses, it's driveways, it's decks, it's concrete patios. It's essentially almost any impervious area. I don't know that we specified or examined just the house and came up with figures there. We went and looked at a number of homes where we'd issued land use permits for in this subdivision, but I can't recall that we broke it out as to what the actual home would be. In this particular case, and I mentioned that we use this one as an example because it has real-world implication. There's a real live developer that was proposing to build on this, on this lot with a house, and it didn't comply. The house and garage by itself would have. It's really the driveway and the other sidewalk and stuff that are kind of throwing it over. I guess they're all connected, but the house by itself would have. I'm guessing, most cases, the house and garage would comply, but I just don't have that figure for you, unfortunately.
So there's a comment in the staff report indicating or implying that, you know, some 80% of the homes are not meeting the coverage, are exceeding the coverage, I should say?
I'm not sure where that.
There is a comment.
Call what paragraph that's in, Mike?
Yeah. Let me, I'm looking for it at the same time. Maybe I made an assumption there, but.
Well, there's a 20% lot coverage standard, and I don't, I wonder if that's just the inverse of the 20%.
Well, it could be that 80% of the houses are exceeding the 20%.
It could be. I just don't recall.
That's, that would, I would believe that to be true, because we, in-house, were not doing this calculation with, in previous staff levels.
Yeah, I did not, we did not go through the whole subdivision. I don't, I don't recall that we put together a number for the whole subdivision like that. So we went through a number of ones that we had, that had been issued permits and found there are a number of homes in this subdivision that don't comply, but there's 155 lots in here we didn't go through and calculate. There's a handful of lots that aren't built on, but.
Yeah, and I think in terms of being undeveloped with homes on it, how many are left, Joe? To seven lots? So we're talking seven houses. It's the, probably the people that live there that would like to have a deck and a pool. I think that's what started this also, was it not?
Oh, there's, there's a, there's a number. It's not just the developer who's run into this. There's a handful of other existing residents there that want to do decks and/or swimming pools that are all on hold until this is resolved. And I've taken a lot of phone calls and spoken to a lot, and they're not happy with me, but.
Well, so let me get down to my point. I don't necessarily have a problem in revising the plan development to allow additional lot coverage. My question, and I guess the part that I'm uncomfortable with, is what percentage is that? Does it have to be 35%? Is 30% acceptable? I mean, what I'm looking at is, on the examples here, you have a lot that's 100 by 200. Are we to assume that any property owner has the right to build a swimming pool on a small lot? So my only issue is with the approval of the lot coverage, and I'm concerned that it sets a precedent that might become concerning down the road as we get into other developments who said, hey, we're in the same typical situation, and you've approved a percentage of improvement on lot coverage for this development, why can't we get the same?
I think that we've identified that problem, so hopefully that won't be a problem in the future. It's going to be clear for when they, when a new developer comes in, just exactly what that coverage is going to have to be, right?
Well, yeah.
And number two, I think every lot, this is a planned development, so you make decisions on setbacks and sizes and things like that, given the nature of what open space requirements you, or open space that's being offered, or other amenities. And, I mean, I don't think that's an issue. Because like planned development, I don't see that being an issue, it was a slippery slope.
So, and I can maybe comment a little on that. This development, when it was done, was designed to be consistent with the SR zoning district requirements.
Right.
The SR district requires a minimum lot size of 32,670 square feet, something to that effect. There's many lots in here that aren't 32,000 square feet, including this is the one that we've gotten as an example. They're only 20,000 square feet. So those lots are significantly smaller than what the SR district would otherwise require. When you reduce the size of the lot, you're impacting that lot coverage. And that's one of the factors, when staff was looking at this, that took that into consideration, that if the SR district is what you're attempting to achieve here, but then you're giving the PD a waiver on the lot size and reducing the size of the lots, but then also trying to construct homes with the side-load garages, it's created, apparently it has created problems in compliance with that lot coverage standard.
And I recognize that. My point being is, if I was a person out purchasing this parcel to build a house on of X square footage, I think I own some responsibility to recognize that I'm purchasing three tenths of an acre, and I'm not going to have the property available to me to build a 16 by 32 pole barn that somebody down the street might have. And I could say, I'd love to put all my toys away in a storage building. So I think there's an ownership by the person purchasing the property to recognize what you're buying and what you're constructing. And we have the ordinances in place for a purpose. And to arbitrarily say, well, let's just move it up another 15% of coverage. I find it hard to accept. As I stated at the beginning, I'm not opposed to fixing the problem that has been created. The question in my mind is, does it have to be 35% to meet and justify and fix the problem in Heartland Estates? Does 30% fix the problem?
So Mike, that's why I did my math the other way, just to see if it was conventionally zoned, if this was a worst case or not. And then also, just in good planning practice, a while ago, they really, a lot of communities like Hamburg Township bought into cluster development, where you make the lot smaller, but then that open space is more contiguous, so actually wildlife can use it. So they find a lot of benefits, so that extra that they've left untouched. I've been kind of like, you know, going back and forth, like you say, what's the trade-off? Is it still a benefit? Well, at least you're matching what I can see. If we go to 35%, we're matching conventional zoning. Plus, the little perk is, they've now got this extra open space that's all untouched versus divided up, so there's a benefit to that. But when I looked at, like, even the plans that they gave us, kind of trying to do it, it said a three-car garage. Well, a three-car garage is not 42 by 25. A three-car garage is 36 by 24. So already, they were kind of pushing it on the building sizes.
Right.
But again, once, and I'm like, oh, wait a sec. But anyway, the point is, I still see that this plan development still is offering a benefit, and it's not going beyond our regular zoning. That's how I justified it, versus just trying to guess what percentage to do by looking at a site plan. Just a comment.
Yeah, they're not eliminating any of the benefits they offered as a PD package.
No, absolutely not. And Heartland Estates is a beautiful development.
It is.
Lots of open space. I understand that. My problem is individual lot.
Before we come up with a number? Yeah.
And the future of that lot coverage change could drastically impact some of the areas in that state if the homeowners wanted to pursue and do some of that.
Wanted to fill up that, wanted to fill up that 35% or something.
Well, they could. Odds are, how many are going to go to that level and put the pool in? The other is, as I look at the site plan, probably 50% of the lots in that development at least back up to the open space that we're referring to, so they have nobody in their backyard. Up at the front, there are some more dense areas, if you want to call it, where you have a house backing up to a house. But a substantial piece of that particular development, one of the benefits of living there to me would be, nobody's in my backyard.
Absolutely.
So I think if you were to honestly whittle down to, okay, how many lots would filling it up 35% really impact somebody? It's probably the front, whatever that is, phase one or whatever it is. And I'm looking here, where's that, Mark, where's that highlighter thing? I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, those lots are more than, those lots are bigger than what we're talking about. You know, if we're going to talk about a few of them, that might be a little tighter maybe in here. But look at all of this, all of these houses back up to absolutely nothing, including these people here. There's a lot of distance in their backyards.
Sure.
So I understand the concern with the 35%, but realistically, how many people would the lot look full at 35%? And then realistically, how many of those lots would people even do anything on? And to be honest with you, a lot of them, they already exist, because for some reason, we've been approving them for 16 years. So that's where I am with the, with the project, and I appreciate your approach of looking at it differently. I didn't think of that, but that is a good idea. But, you know, you got to pick a number. You got to pick a number. If the number logically is what staff went back through the two, and Sue did it and said 35% is about an SR zoning, which is what it was mimicking, I personally am fine at the 35. I know that there's a letter here from the association that would like to see 38. I'm not sure how 38 came to be, but I'd be willing to work with the 35.
Right. Your point is a good point, because this, this problem may exist in other subdivisions that are not approved as a PD. And that would involve possibly changing the zoning ordinance, which is much more difficult to do, because you have to take into account all of the rest of the township and future subdivisions that aren't built. But since this one is a PD, the PD applies just to this, and these are circumstances that are only associated with this subdivision. I'm not necessarily advocating that the percentage apply universally to other subdivisions at that amount, but given the size of these lots with the open space in this particular subdivision, that's what appears to be consistent with what's out there. So that's how we came up with our number. I would not necessarily come up with that number as a zoning amendment to be applied to the SR district universally throughout the township.
I'd be a little nervous about using the excuse of a side-entry garage, it increases the size of the driveway, to put it, put you into non-compliance situation on lot coverage, because that's not a township requirement, that's a developer's choice when it's built. And I saw that the township, in the future, I think we need to remind, work with the developers and let them know that this is our lot coverage. If you're going, you're going to be giving up percentage of lot coverage, you know, we're not going to change that on a standard development.
not going to change that on a standard development.
That could be very true, but I'll tell you, the next conversation we're going to have, anybody building a house like is in Heartland Estates that wants a side-entry garage. So we'll be talking about it, because I, because I think that's.
I'm struggling with that aspect of it. If that is what's causing lot coverage, then I'm having a real problem with that.
Yeah.
I look at the houses, the house and the deck, and maybe a pool, I don't count the sidewalks and the driveways. You've got to get to your house.
Well, if you took, well, if you took the driveway out, I'm sure that would relieve a lot of the issue we have, but the ordinance.
It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me. You've got to have a driveway.
But since before I have been here, since we've never changed that number, probably before you were on the planning commission, that's been the way it's been calculated. Now, maybe that's something to look at in the future, but.
Maybe that's where.
I guess, is there any more discussion on it? I don't think anybody's convincing anybody of anything.
You can't compare the lake communities, but you got to, you got to recognize that the lake communities, that's right on topic.
Well, maybe it's time to start looking at the ordinance.
I have a little problem with that, because there's people who, you know, can't, they want to improve their lots in the, in those lake communities, and they can't, because they can't meet our ordinance. That makes absolutely no sense. So a guy has a beautiful home on a lake, and he's got a garage across in the back that's sitting there dilapidated, and he can't do anything with it. That's simply wrong. We want to encourage people to improve their properties.
Well, yeah, and that's one of the things we need to take a look at. So is there any more discussion on?
Get back to our motion.
This motion, which we have on the floor, which is a motion from Commissioner Kalani and a second from Commissioner Voight, Commissioner Voight, to recommend approval of the Plan Development Agreement Amendment 17012, which was the 35% lot coverage. Anything else? Okay, with that, I'd like to say, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Let the record show, the nay was Commissioner Mitchell. All right. Thank you. Congratulations, and good luck with all those new decks and pools and everything else that we've been hearing about.
He's got something to do in his office.
Yeah. So congratulations, though. Glad we could get that ironed out for you. Next up, item eight, call to the public. Anybody, anything, anyone? Come on forward if you give us your name.
These people are still filling out forms?
Well, I don't know if we gave up on that.
Robert Klees, I'm AB 714 Giovanni Court, part of your discussion.
All right.
I applied for a deck permit and was refused for the reason you stated earlier. And now I've led to believe that even though it's approved here, it's going to take some time before I get a building permit. The summer will be gone, my window of opportunity is lost for yet another year. I'm not 20 years old, I don't have that many more years left. I wonder if there's some way that we cannot issue a provisional permit held by the town so it can be allowed to go through Livingston County, which takes three to four weeks, and come back to the town by that time we're working in parallel lines versus a linear progression. It's not a reasonable request, given we have so many people in non-compliance who have not been cited and are not going to go there. I just want a little leeway here.
All right. Maybe what I've suggested is after the meeting, maybe you talk with Troy and you can discuss those options.
He already said no.
Okay, kind of.
We don't have that.
So the planning commission doesn't have any authority to do anything on that, but I'm willing to work with homeowners. Now that the planning commission's made a recommendation, I'm willing to work with some homeowners on that, and I can talk with you outside of this meeting.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, we'll close, call to the public. Troy, did you have anything in planner's report for us?
I do. I just want to comment, the ordinance review committee, I probably should have commented at the last meeting, they have been working hard on some canopy lighting under gas automobile fuel stations with an amendment to bring to planning commission. Unfortunately, our docket at the planning commission has been filled with other agenda items, so look for that stuff to come in the future. And then also, they've been working very hard on some sign requirement changes to automobile fuel stations as well. So keep posted for those things coming to you in the future. They've been working very hard on that, so.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Committee reports, comments, anyone?
Nothing.
Anyone? If not, a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell, a second from Commissioner Voight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.